Okay, I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting for August 19, 2025, to order. The invocation tonight will be given by Councilperson Dowling.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
..........................................
Alrighty. So, before I have the roll called, I'd like to announce that Ward Three Councilman Mark Freeman has resigned effective August 14th. And I want to say what a pleasure it's been to serve with Mark these years, and I wish him all the best of luck, and we're gonna miss him. But, of course, over the next 30 days, we have to find a replacement, and we will. So Julie, if you would, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here. Okay. So, moving on to the approval of minutes. Council, you are on receipt of the July 1st, 2025 Regular Meeting Minutes.
We approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling? Yes. Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay. So, next, we have one public hearing, and the way the public hearing works is you'll get a chance to speak for and against this ordinance if you see fit to. But this public hearing is now called to order and is being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to law. So Julie, if you'd read the ordinance, please.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor, 2006, as amended, and the official zoning map of, by the zoning of approximately 14.5 acres located south of Atkins Road and northwest of the Reynolds Road State Route Two interchange from R4 Single Family Residential District to PRD Planned Residential District Overlay pursuant to a development plan permitting the construction of 45 homes and a clubhouse, providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate and declaring an emergency.
And for the record, this is ordinance number 25-0-069. Joe, would you like to start us off?
I don't have anything specific, no. Not, this is a mandatory referendum because of the nature of the overlay rezone, and therefore pursuant to charter, it has to go to the electors. The November election of council passes it tonight for advancement to the general election.
Good. Ken, do you have anything?
Mr. President, I'll ask Mrs. Kent Anzari to give us a brief summary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Members of council, just to reiterate, this is a rezone of 14.5 acres on Atkins Road to the planned residential development overlay district and allowing for the development of 45 single-family units on this vacant parcel property. I'm sorry. The proposed units include a mixture of standard single-family and cluster single-family homes. The proposed open space is 3.8 acres or 26 percent, which conforms to the minimum open space requirement for a planned residential development. The purpose of a PD overlay district is to encourage and accommodate unique, well-designed developments that offer a level of flexibility and variation from the standard district requirements. These residential developments offer common recreational amenities and lower maintenance living through smaller, lower maintenance living through smaller lot sizes yet remain complementary to surrounding residential neighborhoods because they are like uses. Landscape buffers are provided for additional screeding and to maintain existing natural features on site. The proposed plan includes a rear 50-foot buffer along the west side of the development from the adjacent residential areas. A 25-foot buffer is also provided along the east side of the development adjacent to the Painesville Baptist Church property. A portion of the needed storm sewer on site is proposed within a section of the open space. The Planning Commission recommended a condition that the sewer placement be accepted within this open space area with the condition that it has minimal impact within this open space area. In July of 2024, the city voted, city council voted 7-0 to place this proposed planned residential development on the November 24th general election ballot, following an affirmative recommendation from the Planning Commission. The proposed rezoning was voted down by the citizens last November by less than 1 percent of the total votes cast. A new formal rezone application for the same project was reviewed by the Planning Commission at a public hearing on July 3rd, 2025. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed rezoning and preliminary site plan for this 14.5 acres from R4 Single Family Residential to Planned Residential Development Overlay District by a vote of 5 to 1. Specific conditions were made part of this recommendation and are included in the report before council. And the developer is here tonight to discuss the proposed project if you have any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. So, the applicant, you guys here, if you'd like to come up and give us, give us your pitch?
Name and address.
That's it?
Name and address.
Oh, yeah.
No.
If you could give us your name and address?
My name's Jeff Smol, 2167 Mentor Avenue. I'm with 20th Century Construction.
I'm Pat Perino. I'm with Perino Builders, custom builders.
Address, Pat?
Chuck Zucks from Polaris Engineering, 34600 Chertan Road, Willoughby Hills.
Okay. And if I could just get your address for the record?
7976 Mayfield Road, Chesapeake, Ohio.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Got the floor.
So, we're, me and Pat have been building houses in the Lake County area for about 30-plus years, probably almost 40 years. So, we're local builders. A lot of misconception's been out there about this is gonna be a national builder. We're local builders, local developers. We've been in the area for a long time. The community that we're building is called an Epcun community. It's a 55-plus age community geared for people who are downsizing their houses. Their houses are too big, their yards are too big. They don't want the maintenance or care of those yards anymore. So, this, this project is geared for that, that age group. The development would be an HOA-run development. So, you cut, cut, cut the grasses, shovel the snow, plow the drives, everything would be taken care of by the HOA. So, the property will, will maintain. The property will also have a clubhouse, so the residents can gather and their neighbors can get to know each other as well socially. So, we have our development in Concord called Canterwood Farms. We're about 75 percent sold out there. A lot of the people that are buying into that development are residents in the area, and the, the big reason why I hear people say that they want to move into this type of development is, is the reason I stated before. The houses are too big, the yards are too big, they want to downsize, they want to spend more time traveling, they want to spend more time with their kids rather than taking care of their houses. So, that is the big need for most of the communities out there. There is really kind of, through, across America, a real need for people 55-plus communities. The houses themselves have no steps. They have, you know, both sort of showers, so you can age in place. Wider doorways, so if you move in there when you're in your 50s and 60s, you can live generally through most of your life and, and inside the house. So, and then Pat can speak to his development and experience.
We have a subdivision we put in in Willoughby Hills. It's been going really well. There's a lot of people that have dual residence. They have residence in Florida or Arizona, and they also want to be close to their children. So, if their children go to schools in the area, or they, they're, they have grandkids in the area, they want to move closer to them. So, you're getting, those people coming in as well, and, and they like it. You know, there's, it's, we have also another subdivision we have in, in Sheffield Village, an Epcun subdivision. And the clubhouse is really cool because they get to gather. It's kind of like being in school again, get to meet neighbors, get to meet fellow people instead of living in your house by yourself. Especially if, we get a lot of widows and widowers because they want to live with somebody. They don't want to just stay in their home by themselves, and they're not ready to go to an assisted living, so they want to be in their own home. They got the cash to do it, they got the money to do it. So, it's, it's an upside, it's all an upside from what we hear from our clients and, and from, you know, from people that we sold to. They really, there's really a big need for this.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's stick close.
Yeah, one, one other thing is, the Mentor Housing Study that was performed really called out a need for this type of development and this type of product for 55-plus communities.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Stick close in case we've got more questions. Okay, so, next, is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? And I, I think there are a few people. Sir, please come up to the microphone and give us your name and address.
My name's Mike Maggio. I live at 7597 Kittery Lane. My house is adjacent to this property. Last year, when I spoke at the Planning Commission, I voted, or I, I spoke for the development. I think Perino builds good homes, but that's not the issue that I have. The issue that I have is the buffer zone that's supposed to be 50 feet wide, and it looks like this year they want to put storm lines 20 feet into the 50-foot buffer zone, okay, which is going to possibly take out 40 percent of the trees, and any of the trees that are remaining will end up being probably killed because their root systems will, will be severed. The trees will possibly fall over. Also, the trees that are in the middle of the buffer zone will now be on the end of the buffer zone, so then they'll probably develop sunscald and, and probably die due to insect attacks because they'll be under stress. There's a couple other things that I'd like to discuss. So, the buffer zone acts as a screen for us currently because it hides the car headlights of the cars that are entering Route Two going west on 306. Right now, it adds privacy from the future development, holds soil from washing into the gully, as well as provides shade and cooler temperatures. When the heavy rains fall, the large canopies of the trees slow down the rain from washing the soil into the gully or the creek. It's really not a creek because nothing seems to flow. The water either seeps back into the soil or gets soaked up by the root systems of the trees that are in the buffer zone currently. If these trees get removed, sediment will wash into the gully, making it shallower and possibly make it easier to flow into my backyard. I also want to know how they're going to grade the soil if they go to build. Are they gonna be grading it so it directs it into the gully, which then further pushes it towards my yard? At the July 3rd meeting for this year for the planning, the Director of Planning was asked if any changes were made to the buffer zone, and she stated no. But the problem is that now they're, we're looking to put a sewer line in the buffer zone, where last year that was not included, okay? Like I said, you'll remove half the trees. Right now, because of the size of the trees, they're 30, 40 feet high, so the canopies are also 20 to 40 feet wide. So, if you do put trees in there, those canopies of trees are going to hide any of the newer homes. Landscape, or builders will come in and say, "Well, we'll put some landscaping in, we'll do evergreens or whatever." Those are gonna be six-foot-high evergreens. Pyramid trees are not going to do what the existing trees do for us right now. At the Mentor Planning Commission meeting this year also, there was talk the same evening about Mentor Heights Phase One, and the Director of Planning said at that moment, they said they had an aha moment, and they decided for that development that they thought a mature buffer zone was always desired rather than putting in something that is four and six feet high. So, and then later on, it was also stated that they'd make the property owner happy, who's somebody who loves trees, not to take down the trees that are perfectly healthy and provide for the best buffer we could ask for. These trees may not be of the highest species, but they still, still serve a purpose and have value to the existing homeowners that are there now. So, and the other thing, like I says, one of the things in 2024, when the builder applied, the city's policy states on landscape buffering has always been that the buffer area is for landscaping, and no improvements are permitted to be placed within those areas. So, I'm wondering if that means no, no storm lines or anything like that. So, I'd like at least somebody to consider maybe tabling this and looking at it or coming out. My councilman was able to take the time to come out, and he understands our concerns. Nobody seems to know who's responsible for this creek, whether it's a creek or a gully, whether it's the city, the county, but we'd like to have this addressed. Also, this being a urban forestry, a Tree City USA, we're supposed to talk about preserving trees and, and saving trees and encouraging the urban forestry to grow. So, I'd like to see us consider that more. Maybe there's a compromise we can all come to, but this is my concern. Thank you.
Is there anybody else would like to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Sir, if you'd like to come up, give us your name and address?
My name is Frank Lemay, 7119 Atkins Road. I live about a half a mile down from this project, but I will be affected by it. First of all, you just, gentleman just talked about this green buffer. There is a ditch through there. I can tell you that in 1939, that ditch was put in by the Osborne Corporation for their asphalt plant. It was, it's, was up on the hill where their cement place is now. In 1962, when the freeway was built, that was blocked off, but my wife found out at the Mentor's Library, when this property was first bought by Lake Tran, that in 1962, the Army Corps of Engineers deemed this as wetlands. I need to know, have you done a wetlands mitigation for this particular property before I decide whether I'm gonna vote yes or no on the property? The third thing, they showed retention basin. Retention basins bring those favorite animals of Atkins Road, known as geese. We are plagued with them. They leave excrement everywhere. There is a solution, and it's not killing them. Fence it in. During the nesting season, geese have to have a way out of the pond, and they lose their flight feathers. They have to have a way out to feed every half hour, and of course, poop every half hour in our driveways, and then they go back to the pond. They're probably smart enough to figure out that if they can't get in and out of it and can feed, they don't nest there. So, I'd like to see a fence around, all the way around this particular retention basin. Fourth thing, the current water, the only time I've ever seen that, that field completely dry was the summer of 88, when we had 90-degree-plus temperatures 39 days, including three days over 100. It's the only time it's been completely dry. It was wet all the way through the, the end of June this year. Once the snows come, I'll guarantee you that, that whole property will be extremely wet. The water flows to the front ditch. That front ditch, do you know where it goes? The water? It goes under the road to the east side, or to the north side of Atkins. It goes eastward for about 10 feet, and then this pipe, northward again, to a backyard ditch. That backyard ditch eventually comes down through my property. I'm one of few, over the years, who has gotten down in that ditch and kept it clean. I used to do 400 feet of it, 100 feet of my property, and 300 feet of my neighbors who were a little bit older than me. I'm 82 now, I don't get down there anymore. It's too, you know, I've fallen a couple times, not again. We're responsible for keeping that ditch clean, not the City of Mentor. The only, only, or they have an easement on the first 10 feet down by the, the headwall at, at the bend in the, in the road, in Atkins Road, there's a headwall there. The fellows have come out, and they've, they've cleaned it out. They even showed me a map showing the direction that the water flows, and by the way, the map is wrong. It would show the water going from the ditch through that headpipe and then going southward to the retention basin for Kittery Cove and Rain Tree. It goes the other way. That's an outflow for that, that retention basin. The, I saw that down, down in the Planning Commission office a few years ago. Basically, I, you're, you're building a lot of houses there, you're gonna have a lot more runoff. I'm very concerned that my backyard is going to flood. It has flooded under the circumstances of some heavy rains in the past. It'll be even worse now. That little retention basin, or detention basin, whichever you want to call it, is, has to empty out once in a while, and when they empty it out, it's gonna come through my backyard, and I don't want to see it there. I have enough water already to deal with, and that, that's my main issue. Traffic is another story, you know, everybody talks about, about traffic. We, when I first moved in in 1976, almost 50 years ago, we had 300 cars a day. We now have close to 4,000 cars a day, thanks to the, all the cut-throughs from Willoughby, from the north end of Willoughby, from Westminster, and of course, Kittery and Rain Tree have added a lot of traffic as well. So, we need to, to look at this a little deeper, look at the, the width of the road. Atkins Road is only 22 feet wide. Landscaper trucks are straddling the double yellow lines as they come down. Lake Tran, paratransits do the same thing. It's, it, there's a, a lot of issues that need to be looked at before you go any further with this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, I'd like to ask the applicant to come back up and maybe address the concerns that we've heard pertaining to...
We're gonna let our engineer speak on, on all the engineering, but as far as the geese, we have ponds all over the place. We hire geese control. We have no geese in our lakes. They bring, it's, 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 it's a company that comes out and takes care of it before the feathers, while they're still able to fly. We've done it at all our subdivisions. Behind my home, I have a one-acre lake. We have no geese. So, the geese is not, a non-issue.
Mr. President? Hold on just a second. I, I think we'd like to hear about is the buffer, the wetlands, and the drainage?
Yeah, he's gonna talk on that.
Yeah, I'll start with the buffer. That seems to be the, one of the biggest issues. That storm sewer was added there because we felt that there was drainage coming off the buffer area going to the neighbors to the west, so I don't know if the city allows that to happen. So, we put the storm sewer in there to stop that. If we're going through the approval process and the city engineer agrees we don't need it and the water is okay, if it does come off, we can eliminate it.
All right. And wetlands?
Wetlands, we do have a wetland, not a permit, because that comes later with final design. We have delineation. Everything will be adequate with the core. I mean, obviously, everything's gotta be permitted when we get to that point.
Matt, did you have something?
Thank you. Mr. Perino, I gave you a call about the storm. Did you just say that you could move, not put that storm in? Is that what you're...
I'm saying if the city, if there is water coming out of the buffer area, flowing on to the neighbors to the west, if that's allowable, we can eliminate it.
Okay. We, I did a walkthrough with Mr. Maggio and Mike, and we did a, we just, we took a measurement off his property line 50 feet out and then 20 feet back for the storm.
Okay.
And the line of trees was incredible that you'd be pulling out, you know, just, just so you know, and everybody knows.
That's the last thing we want to do.
I mean, it's almost unnecessary. You're almost creating more work for yourself because the line of trees is just, it goes and goes and goes, and you're moving over the other side of the mound, and the storm is gonna go on the, what side of that? Is that the east side?
East side?
Yeah. Yeah.
West.
And, is that west? Yeah, the west side. And...
It almost seems unnecessary. I was a little shocked when I saw it there, but if we could work on that heavy, and even the engineers can maybe look at it and get it, if it's necessary, a storm drain. We love storm drains. We don't want water going into other properties when we do developments. It's one of our main pet peeves. The other thing was, when you first brought this to us, we talked about the clubhouse because the people on Atkins Road didn't want to look at the clubhouse, and they didn't want to hear the pickleball, and we were, we were suggesting, and we talked about it, and one of you gentlemen said to me, "Yeah, we can do that," and I haven't heard back about that yet. But I was thinking about the southeast corner up by the cul-de-sac. If we can move the clubhouse, I don't think anybody will hear any noise in these other neighborhoods over here on the...
Won't be next to your pond.
On the west side, you could keep all the action of the clubhouse away from the neighborhood and so they don't have to listen to it through the trees. The pickleball, it does make noise.
Well, the only problem with that is, we wanted the, the clubhouse, it works in front of the pond for the prawn, and, you know, the pickleball, we were in Sheffield, we got, pardon me? The silent balls and the, and the paddles that we put there. Also, what we've done is we've screened it with our bivides...
Yeah.
...so that they don't see it, and which we are willing to do here, but it's just so important. We don't have that many lots. We have to attract people, and, and the pond attracts them because we'll have a big fountain in the pond, and...
And I'm not, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'm thinking if you took this pond and you moved it east, and you put the clubhouse on top, there's no housing on the east side of this, of this development. You're not, you're not gonna put this pond or this clubhouse on the residential end where these people live behind this 50-foot buffer. I don't see why that can't be possible.
You, you want to move the pond south?
Yes. No, the pond would be moved, where's it, east.
Like where's...
Instead of, instead of bending your road, put the pond on the east side, put the clubhouse on top, eliminate the storm sewer, possible engineering, and you're basically answering all the questions that the, that the, these people in this development are asking you to do. You might gain the votes, you might gain the votes to get your development, to be honest with you, but I, I don't think anybody has any problem with the designs of your homes and the layouts of your homes. I, I personally don't. I think it's a great product. But if you could swing a road to the east, why can't you swing it back to the west and put the retention pond over against that empty lot? It's not an empty lot, there's a small church there, but you're, these geese aren't gonna start gathering and then going in to these people's yards on this side, and...
Was he talking about putting it here and putting the road straight?
Right. Put the road straight. So, basically, we're talking about moving the clubhouse up where nobody could hear it, and I don't think it's a terrible spot. I think it's actually a pretty good spot.
And, and I mean, if, if the pickleball court's that big of a, big of a, of a problem, we could always put another bocce court in, or, you know, something that doesn't make no noise whatsoever, so...
Well, you don't want to, you don't want to eliminate the pickleball. I'm saying you could put the pickleball in, but they don't have to listen to it, you know?
Yeah, no, I agree, but the, the only problem is the pond creates such, you know, if you go into my subdivisions and you look at the ponds and the way they light up at night, matter of fact, the neighbors to the backside would probably love it. And we do eliminate the geese with, with, with the goose doctor.
Yeah.
He's done it for us for years. I've, you know, eliminated him from all my properties.
I'm just telling you...
No, I got you.
That you may have votes if you do what we're asking you to do.
I mean, if we could do that, I don't care. Put the pond here and the...
What's he saying? If you put this straight?
Straight, so you don't lose units.
Yeah. Matt, this is the public hearing part. We're gonna have a, this ordinance.
I'm good.
You have another bite of the apple.
All right.
All right.
Is that okay?
Get it in their heads. Ken, did, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just, just a quick comment for the residents that, that have some concerns about utility-related issues, whether it's the storm sewer, the drainage, the size of the detention pond. Keep in mind that this is a preliminary plan for the purposes of rezoning. A final site plan hasn't even been reviewed by the engineering department. It's been preliminarily reviewed, so we would make sure that any water that comes off of this site would be detained appropriately so that it would have, usually, when a new project like this comes to us, it positively impacts drainage on adjacent properties, so it takes water away typically, and that would, would be our, our goal, but, but the, what is required is that there be no impact, and we would, we would be assured of that. So, some of the questions here would be answered by some of the engineering review that has yet to be done.
All right.
Mr. President, one more thing.
Can we...
One more thing. One more thing.
Can we handle it during the pub, this is the public portion?
I'm talking to the president.
Yeah, Matt, let's, let's do it during...
I'm talking to the president.
It's coming right up next. Right up next, promise. I'll go to you first. All right. All right, council, you are on receipt of all correspondence pertaining to this matter, and at this time, this public hearing is adjourned. So, moving on to, don't go anywhere, guys. Moving on, new legislation, ordinance number 25-0-069.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Mentor, 2006, as amended, and the official zoning map by the rezoning of approximately 14.5 acres located south
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended, and the official zoning map by the rezoning of approximately 14.5 acres located south of Atkins Road and northwest of the Reynolds Road State Route 2 interchange from R4 Single Family Residential District to PRD, planned residential development overlay pursuant to a development plan permitting the construction of 45 homes and a clubhouse, providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate and declaring an emergency.
All right, now, council, that's our turn.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Go.
So, we got it in your heads. You need, you need a small amount of votes. The people are asking, that neighborhood is probably the neighborhood that put you under, on the last ballot, right? You lost by minimal. If you could, you know, Pat, I, I wish you would have called me back.
You know, I, I called the engineer, because I knew we were coming here. I didn't know I was supposed to call you back. I apologize. I, I didn't have answers for you. I have to talk to him. He's got to tell me what is possible. And I called him, I said, is this possible to move this pond without affecting the number of houses? So, I did make the call, but, you know, it was so close that-
I, I, I don't, I, I don't, I can't figure out why it would affect the number of houses. You could take sublot 23, move it down here where the clubhouse is, put the clubhouse up in 23, move the pond over, and eliminate the storm if the engineer said you can. That's what the residents are asking for. We love your product.
Okay. What, what, just one thing I, I would tell the residents, okay? If they could go by my home, I put a pond where I didn't have a pond in the back of my yard. I spent $150,000 for the pond. The pond is like your, your, with the fountains and all that, it's like you're on vacation. For any of these houses here, and the houses behind it, if they went and looked at our Willoughby Hills subdivision, if they go look at our, our subdivision that's in Sheffield, and they look at what we did there, they'll see, you know, that, that the pond actually enhances the views, the views of this beautiful pond with a big fountain, lights up at night. I would encourage you to go and look at that. If you could move it, I'd be more than glad to move it.
And like Mr. Blake said, this is to get you on the ballot. This, this could, this conversation could be the deciding factor to get you on the ballot. That, that's why I'm having the conversation with you.
Absolutely, we would try to move.
That's all I got.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Jen.
Just a little clarification. The geese patrol that you hire, who maintains that?
The HOA. We pay for it.
Okay, so the HOA would be responsible?
Yes.
Okay, because we've seen, unfortunately, in the past, sometimes things happen with HOAs, and they don't follow through, so.
That, you know, I, I haven't seen that yet in any of our subdivisions.
That's good, okay.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I just want to reinforce what Mr. Maggio said about the, the buffers on, I'm, I'm very confident if there's a drain going in, that you're going to lose the trees. The drip lines will be disturbed, and the distress, once you take some out, will eventually kill them. And I, I use Newell Creek as a good example. It's a 100-foot buffer that has greatly enhanced that development. And it's really a great buffer. And this, if it's a buffer, it should be a buffer. It shouldn't be classified. And I'm sure our engineer department will work with you on that to try to make sure that doesn't happen.
We never want to cut down trees.
I understand.
Lots are worth more with trees.
Right. Thank you.
Ken, do you have anything else that you'd like to?
Nothing further.
Council, anything else? Do we have a motion?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
All right. All right, guys. You got it.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 25-0-069 has been approved. Moving on, we have ordinance number 25-0-070.
An ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of streets here and after mentioned within the termini designated by supplying such streets with electric street lighting and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Mr. President, Mr. Roganich, please.
Thank you, city manager and city council. This is one of two ordinances pertaining to the street lighting assessment that city council sees each year. The first ordinance is needed to be passed for the city to proceed with, moving forward with the street lighting assessment. And it's, it's in line with the resolution that was passed by city council in April.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-070 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-071.
An ordinance to levy assessments for the improvement of various streets in the city of Menor by supplying said streets with electric street lighting and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-0-071 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-072.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Roganich, please.
This ordinance is needed at this time for advances to happen from the general fund to the other respective funds, just to maintain positive balances until the grant funds come into those funds. And the second part is pertaining to budget adjustments needed at this time. The more significant budget adjustments are related to two change orders that are included in ordinances to, for city council to consider this evening. And those two, one is related to a change order for the parking lot at Blackbrook Golf Course, which is at $268,000. And then there's another change order for the Marina Bulkhead Project. The budget adjustment for that is $130,025. And another significant item is related to the beginning of engineering for the splash pad at Garfield Park. That budget adjustment is at $383,000.
Thank you. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-072 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-073.
An ordinance, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to process a change order to the contract with Huffman Equipment Rental, Inc., for the Menor Lagoons Park Marina Bulkhead Replacement Project, Phase 6, and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. And we did run into a little snag with the addition of the new utility poles at the marina, which is a very, very big positive for us, but it did come with a slight negative. Mr. Kaminsky?
It did. Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. As you're all aware, we are on Phase 6 of the Menor Lagoons Bulkhead Replacement Project. And as Mr. Flipiak just indicated, the new electric service that came in, that was provided by First Energy Corp. They require telephone poles that needed to be installed to be able to get the electricity across the water into where it needs to go. But that does not allow any company the ability to be able to pound the steel bulkheads into the ground because of the overhead and the fact that they have to bring in a 60-foot crane to do it. In doing so, Huffman Equipment Rentals and us are recommending dredging the water, which will allow Huffman Equipment Rental to work waterside and be able to get their barge into the lagoon. We, in the Parks and Recreation Department, we're going to request additional monies next year to be able to do that dredging. So, we're just doing it a little bit earlier than what we were planning on. Approval of this change order will allow the Bulkhead Phase 6 project, project to be completed this year, and the dredging ahead of schedule. Based upon a review and the past work with the city of Menor, Verdantis, the Huffman Equipment Rental meets all requirements and experience for that project. Therefore, it is recommended the change order be awarded to Huffman Equipment Rental contract in the amount of $130,025. Thank you.
Thank you. And it, it doesn't make sense, then, to take down those poles, because we're going to do the dredging anyhow.
That's correct.
Got it. All right.
I would, I would add to this, council, too. We did have our consulting engineer review the quote, and they thought it was actually a very favorable one for the change order. So, actually getting, getting this done ahead of time, and actually, we'll be getting those docks open then, ahead of perhaps scheduled, so.
Okay. One of those things that happens.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Flipiak and Mr. Kaminsky, when do you anticipate this project will start?
It's projected to start in September, as soon as the voting season slims down a little bit, and to be done by the middle of October.
Right, so then, next year, the plan is to pick up where this Phase 6 leaves off, right, Phase 6?
That is correct. It would start at E1 and continue down approximately 500 feet.
That's correct. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-0-073 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-074.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision and dedication plat for Phase 1 of the Menor Heights subdivision on Chillicothe Road at 73437391 and 7411 Chillicothe Road in the RVG Village Green District, and declaring an emergency.
Ken, we've been waiting on this one for, we were talking this morning, was it 10 years?
You know, I, I did a little research on it. It was actually 2018 when the rezoning was approved. I think the submission may have been a little prior to that, so, not quite 10 years, but it's been a little bit of a wait.
I think I can go back in time before that, when we were really hammering this one out.
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. So, you got anything for this?
Thank you, council. Mrs. Cantanzariti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Members of council, the developer is proposing the Phase 1 plat of the Menor Heights subdivision, which will consist of 20 sublots on 8.15 acres and 1.38 acres of open space. The first phase is located in the northern portion of the development, adjacent to Reed Hurst Estates subdivision on Chillicothe Road, and includes seven subplot, I'm sorry, subplot 7 through 26. This phase conforms with the preliminary subdivision plan that was approved in January of 2025. The Phase 1 final plat was considered by the Planning Commission at their July 3 meeting. This subdivision, to reiterate, was rezoned to the RVG Village Green in March of 2018. The 2018 approved rezoning development plan for Menor Heights provided for 47 total single-family residential sublots with just over four acres of, of open space. The maximum density permitted in the RVG Village Green was 2.5 units per acre, or 47 units for the 19-acre site. Village Green projects were required to provide for open space equal to no less than 15% of the total development area, exclusive of streets. And one of the conditions the Planning Commission made on the preliminary plan was that the four acres of open space established in the preliminary be established for the rest of the development. As this property is a former tree nursery, one of the conditions of the rezoning approval was for the developer to provide a tree management plan with a submission indicating the type and size of any trees on site that can be preserved and incorporated into the open space areas. The developer informed us that once this active nursery season is over, the current owner, developer, and the city's arborist will walk the property and mark any viable trees that can be replanted into the open space areas. When we originally reviewed this, it was originally proposed that the existing trees along Chillicothe Road would be removed between the proposed lace bark and paper bark drives for the installation of new landscaping, as well as a sidewalk. However, after reviewing this further, the administration and Planning Commission recommend that those existing trees and mound be preserved as a mature buffer immediately to the development, and not to remove the healthy trees. The sidewalk along Chillicothe should also be waived to preserve this line of trees. There is an existing bike lane along Chillicothe Road, and no other sidewalks are present. Developer should update this as part of the Phase 2 submission. The applicant provided a draft of the Declaration of Covenants for the Menor Heights subdivision for review and approval. In part, this includes that the front elevations shall have a minimum of 25% brick, stone, or stone-like materials installed, and requirements that architectural shingles with a minimum 30-year rating be installed on all elevations. The Planning Commission recommended approval of Phase 1 for developments of sub 20 sublots by a vote of 6-0 with the conditions outlined in the report provided by council, provided to council.
Kathy, I have a question. As I remember, years ago, this was all going to be one phase.
Yeah, they-
They decided to break-
To break it in two, yeah.
And did I hear you say that Phase 2 would have just seven houses in it?
No.
Or did they not?
No, it's seven through, subplot 7 through 26 will be in Phase 1, and the remainder of the four, total 47 lots will be in Phase 2. So, there'll be two phases. That's it.
Okay.
And the developer is here to answer any particular questions, if you would like, or his representative.
Oh, okay. No, I don't have anything in particular. I was just wondering how, I mean, it's, it's a certain size, why it's a two-phase, but, yeah. No, I'm fine. Good.
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 25-0-074 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-075.
An ordinance amending Part 1, Title 5, Section 151.12 of the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended, relating to the creation of a new part-time position of school resource officer and declaring an emergency.
I can't, I'll cut you, but I think that we need to make an amendment.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It's a very minor amendment on the section number. But essentially, this would supplement and add to our, our current schedule for part-time positions within the city. This would place this classification at grade 22 for the part-time school resource officers that we have fairly recently contracted with the Menor School District to provide. And just as an aside to that, the chief does tell me that his applications have been going okay. He's done several, he's got several interviews scheduled, has concluded some interviews, and we do believe we have some viable candidates at this point, which I think comes as good news to the school district as well.
Good.
Mr. President, if I could, offer an amendment to this resolution, to this ordinance under Section Number 1, I would like to strike 151.12 and add 151.11.
Second. Wait, wait, before we go on, I think we need a correction to the non-exempt status.
Also, in the same section, I would take strike salary exempt and put non-exempt.
Okay, thank you. That, that completes it. Okay. Uh, second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve as amended.
Second. Julie, please call the roll again.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-075 has been approved as amended. Ordinance number
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to VIP Electric Company for replacement lighting at the maintenance facility and fire station number five, and declaring an emergency.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vernon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. Members of council, bids were opened on August 1st for a project to replace lighting at the Menor Maintenance Facility and Fire Station 5. Funds for this project have been made available from a state grant. The lowest bid was submitted by VIP Electric Company with a price of $229,088. VIP Electric Company is an experienced contractor, has worked with the city, and it is my recommendation they award this contract.
Thank you. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-0-076 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-077.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to JTO Inc. for the Blackbrook Golf Course parking lot improvements and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Mr. President, Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Four bids were opened on Friday, August 8 for the Blackbrook Golf Course parking lot improvements. This project consists of expansion and resurfacing of the parking lot, adding curbs, lighting, striping, handicap accessible parking, and additional storm drainage to the lot. It also involves removal of all existing wooden utility poles and relocates all existing overhead wires underground. Four bids received ranged from a low bid of $718,000 to a high bid of approximately $854,000. The bid package consisted of a base bid, no alternates. The best and lowest bid was received from JTO Incorporated of Mentor, Ohio, whose bid was found to be in conformance with all contract requirements. JTO was the lowest bidder and has demonstrated their ability to complete contracts of similar size and scope through their past performance with the City of Mentor. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $776,532. Review of the bid from JTO indicates it's in conformance with all contract requirements. It's therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to JTO Incorporated in the amount of $718,000. The scheduled final completion date for the project is May 1 of 2026. However, we expect work to begin on or after September 22 and with paving to be completed before the snow flies. Thank you.
Counsel.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-0-077 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-078.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to process change orders to the contract with Kevin Tuggle, DBA TNS Contracting for the irrigation pump station at Blackbrook Golf Course and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, this change order request actually involves two change orders. When we entered into a contract earlier this year for the installation of the new pump station that will ultimately serve a new irrigation system, it was determined that we both had inadequate power supply as well as a need to dredge the pond to be able to make the installation. As you know, I mean, we inherited the golf course when we purchased it, and the pond, to the best of our knowledge, that pond has never been dredged before. So it simply has to have some sediment removed before this work can go forward. So ask for council's concurrent so that we can move forward and get that installation done before the season ends.
Do you question for the administration, what do you do with the golf balls?
You know, Mr. Kirschner, I figured, I was almost gonna comment on that. I have, I suspect we'll probably pull thousands out of that pond, and who knows? Who knows what we'll do with them? Maybe, probably turn into range balls, some of them.
Move to suspend.
Mr. President?
Oops, sorry.
Mr. Filippiak, how does this move forward with us and our drainage system and the golf course? So this would be considered a first phase?
Yeah, so this is actually the second phase because if you recall, we actually purchased the pump station last year, and then we worked out the specs for the installation, the proper location, and a number of things required to, before we could move it forward with that contract. The next phases of this project will ultimately be putting in portions of the actual underground pipes that would, and sprinkler heads. The pump station had to be in place first. We had to make sure that we had a proper sizing of that pump to be able to install the new system. The new system will be done very differently than the old system, and we're planning on taking that in phases because what we learned early on when we tried to bid this out all at once is that no one's capable out there of providing us a quote to do it all. So we also think that in doing it in phases, there are a lot more contractors that are able to simply do the underground installation as opposed to having the added expertise of dealing with the correct sizing of a pump system and the equipment that it takes to install that. So I think we're hopeful that going forward, we'll be able to see more than a few contractors interested in this.
Okay, thank you.
Just from the size of it.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Be nice to finally get it done, right?
Hope so, yes.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes. Titleists with the red dot on them are mine. But there's a lot of those in there.
Ordinance number 25-0-078 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-079.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Burgess and Nifel Inc. for architectural and engineering services for the splash pad and building project at Garfield Park and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, you don't typically see a lot of professional service contracts. We thought these bring the senior attention just because of the size of it, and also kind of give you a little update on the project. This is with Burgess and Nifel. They have been doing some work on this project already. In fact, we expect it to be bid out prior to the end of this year under contract, and it's still our goal to open, to be able to open the spray park for the 2026 season. As of right now, we have a preliminary, some preliminary designs that are attached to this, although we'll be able to do a better job of providing those to you as we go forward here. We do, you know, we expect this contract to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $5 million. So this represents a little under 10% of the likely design cost on that.
Thank you.
You may also recall, counsel, that this is a bit of a reset on the design. We were somewhat disappointed in the work that was done with the contracting engineer for, who was planned for this project, who did the preliminary work on this site. And so we did switch over to Burgess and Nifel, who has given us some very good service and really kick-started this project for us. So we've been very pleased with their work overall. And of course, you know, the project that you authorized a little earlier, which was the buildings at Civic Center Park, is a good example of their work and a good example that they're been reliable for us in getting things done on time. So good mentor company, and we're happy to be working with them on a lot of our projects.
Ken, I remember when we first talked about this, we considered doing this in phases. Is that something that we're still thinking about doing, starting with the major phase and then doing additions to the splash park? Or are we gonna, are they gonna design it for all in one, one and done?
It's designed for a one and done. That isn't to say that it couldn't be expanded. We're taking advantage of most of the real estate that we had to work with there. One of the nice things about how this is being designed is that the vendor that we're anticipating using for the spray features, and the way that this will be designed, will allow those features to be interchanged over time. So you'll have, you know, obviously, it'll be all new and fun and exciting for the kids early on, but as time goes on and they want to see something different, it is more of like a plug-and-play system, which we, which we like because obviously that is cost-effective over time as well.
So one year it's a spinning elephant, and then next year it's a spitting giraffe.
Next year it might be a hissing snake or something, yeah.
Excellent. Counsel.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance number 25-0-079 has been approved. Next is ordinance number
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a second amended development agreement with Uptown Mentor LLC for the construction and exemption from taxation of improvements to certain blighted parcels of real property and declaring an emergency.
And I see we have the applicants in the audience. We'll call them up in a minute, but Ken.
I'll turn this over to Mr., defer to Mr. Zeeman on this. I just would add, from the administration's point of view, very excited to see this step moving forward. We've been excited for this project for a very long time, and I think it'll be a great addition to Mentor Avenue and to the community overall, and would urge your approval.
Okay, and then Joe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, as you recall, the amended development agreement was initiated from the original development agreement, which was a commercial building. When the project was re-envisioned to be a mix of ground floor, commercial, as well as upper floor rental units, through the course of several years, some, the development team has gotten a little bit further into their processes, and as market conditions have been what they have been, some further modifications were proposed. The exterior of the building, you'll see some revisions to the elevations, really substantially the same, some minor changes to those exterior elevations, perhaps more material, some changes to the proposed tax exemption structure. And so what's in front of you is the result of quite a lot of dialogue between all the stakeholders and stuff. If there's any specific questions about it, it provides for, the development agreement then would provide for several components. One, obviously, the demolition of these existing vacant structures, the development of the new Uptown Building, related parking and other infrastructure, preservation of the, called the Bank Building, which is not quite on the corner of Jackson Street, Little Mountain, and Route 20, but, you know, within sight of it, everyone's familiar with that white bank building. That is preserved in this development agreement as well, and some, again, other assorted site improvements would occur. The area would be designated under the development agreement as blighted, and an overlay rezone under one of the city's new classifications would take place as well. Further, required to advance this, of course, would ultimately be a TIF ordinance in the future. That would provide for a tax exemption structure to provide the necessary bridge, economically speaking, between what the developer's vision is, what the city's goals are from a policy perspective, and economic reality. So that's probably the more material aspects of the changes here in this proposed second development agreement. I have no legal reservations about it as presented, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Allison, Mike, you guys want to add anything to this? This has been in the works for a long time.
Yes, it has. As Mr. Zeeman has said, obviously, Mark, you want me to-
If you could give us your name and address.
Sure, absolutely. Allison Sikora, I'm president of Uptown Mentor LLC and also a Mentor resident, 9260 Kathleen Drive. And my attorney-
Mike Sikora, Mentor resident, counsel for the developer, 9260 Kathleen Drive, Mentor, Ohio.
So yes, it's been a long time in the making, and obviously, there's been a lot of changes in the market conditions, and with the housing study showing there's a need for multifamily housing, it makes sense. The location to shift to multifamily on the floor 2 through 4, and then also being a mixed-use building with the first floor being restaurant retail.
So I think everybody who lives in Mentor knows where this area is. It's probably our worst blighted block of stores that date back to like the 50s, right on Mentor Avenue, near the old Mentor Hardware.
Very visible.
Very visible. And when it's gone, we're gonna be happy.
Very happy. As you've probably noticed, I've started to do some improvements even to the front of the Bank Building, and that is receiving, I don't, I'm assuming you've received lots of calls. We're working with Lassiter &amp; Son Landscaping, and they've received tons of calls. People very excited about seeing some movement in the area and just how much we've done so far in improving that area.
So do you have any idea when you're gonna start with the demolition?
Sure. Well, obviously, we need you to approve the signing of the second amended development agreement, and then I have to complete the planning and the approval process. We've gotten far in it, but there's still some additional steps. And then we have to take it back out to rebid. Obviously, the conditions have changed since it's been last, bid last. And then I'm assuming if everything goes smoothly from this point forward, then we'll be starting it early next year.
Great, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, counsel.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Allison, Mike, Godspeed, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance number 25-0-080 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-081.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Ohio's A-Quality Cleaners, DBA A-Quality Facility Services for Custodial Services and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vernon, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of council, bids were opened on August 6 for custodial services for the Senior Center, Fire Administration, Dispatch, City Hall, Court, and Police. The low bid for this program was submitted by A-Quality Facility Services for a three-year contract for the price of $509,064.25. A-Quality received positive references from several agencies, and it is my recommendation that we award this contract.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Ordinance number 25-0-081 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 25-0-082.
An ordinance accepting and authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Action Contractors LLC for the Civic Center Pool Building Replacement Project and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think we're super excited about this project. As you know, this would be the full demolition of the existing buildings that are currently sitting on the Civic Center Pool Site. We expect this to coincide with the completion of the water slide that is currently under construction there, as well as the completion of the additional parking that will both serve the pool area as well as the Civic Center campus. We did receive multiple bids. The low bidder on this is Action Contractors LLC with a low bid of $5,94,450. The engineer's estimate for this was $5,600,000. And we have reviewed Action Contractors' bid specifications, their, all of their information that they submitted and it is in order. We have not done business with them in the past, but we believe that they've got a good reputation and we have no reservations about asking council to approve this. Again, this site will not only serve our pool goers, but it will also provide opportunities for improved restaurant and concession facilities for our, both for our pickleballers and those who will be visiting at our concerts during the course of the year. So, ask for council's approval.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-0-082 has been approved. Next is resolution number 25-R-112.
A resolution declaring the necessity of repairing and reconstructing certain sidewalks in Zone 1F associated with the 2025 pedestrian safety program in the city of Mentor, requiring that abutting property owners repair same, ratifying and confirming notices, authorizing repair or reconstruction of said sidewalks by the city engineer, and in certain cases, providing for assessment of cost and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would ask Mr. Swigger, before he moves on with his narrative on this, is this our last phase?
Yes, it is.
So, this completes after, I think it's been just under 12 years since we started this project. We've completely gone through the city now and Mr. Swigger's going to be happy to learn that he gets to start all over again.
He's excited about it.
Mr. Swigger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Between May and July of this year, the city completed sidewalk inspections in Zone 1, or Zone 1F of Ward 1. And that is area south of State Route 84, east of Chillicothe Road. That was about 12 miles of sidewalks. Locations of properties with deficient sidewalks have been identified in Exhibit A with this legislation. A total of 446 out of 624 parcels were found to have deficient sidewalk. 1,424 sidewalk slabs were found to have deficiencies requiring repair or replacement. Of this total, the city will be replacing 434 slabs adjacent to existing street trees and 169 slabs related to manhole and utility and storm sewer main issues, and 63 slabs related to ADA ramp lowering. Additionally, the city will be reconstructing 74 handicap ramps at intersections and homeowners will be responsible for the remaining 758 slabs to be repaired or replaced. The legislation is a resolution of necessity which declares that it is necessary to repair the sidewalk deficiencies identified in Exhibit A in accordance with the Highway Revise Code and the Mentor Municipal Code. And upon council approval of this resolution, property owners will be notified and provided 45 days to make the repair. Repair is not made within 45 days will then be made by the city's contractor in 2026 with costs assessed back to the property owners. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number 25-R-112 has been approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have ordinance number 25-0-053.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinance of the city of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by the rezoning of approximately 12.7 acres at 8245 Deepwood Boulevard, that being permanent parcel number 16A005000040 from R4 Single Family Residential to R10 Multi-Family Residential pursuant to development plan and conditions, providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate and declaring an emergency.
Joe, how about if I come to you first this time? Because on here, I didn't see the delineation that was sort of marked to me that we had sidewalks and that's not anywhere in the text that I could see. I think we've got one of the applicants out here. Maybe he could come up and tell us about where those sidewalks, what happened to them.
Sean, it's right here.
I know they're going to be right there, but let's have Adam first. Let's make sure.
Yeah, I hear you.
Good evening. My name is David Novak from Barrington Consulting Group. Address is 9114 Tyler Boulevard. We did submit amended plan when we were here a month ago and we've added sidewalks to one side of the street based on some conversations that we've had with the city. And so, we've done that. And the other real item that I think was the holdup last month was the access easement between our property and Deepwood Condominiums, which that has been resolved and there's a signed agreement and so forth for that easement.
Thank you. When I got my packet, the sidewalks there were like real faint, so Mr. Kirchner's going to add something.
Okay.
That will lock them in. But thank you.
All right. Ray.
Do we have some easements as well?
Pardon?
Do you want to address the easements as well? Just so you understand the notion.
Oh, yeah. You're going to add the easement?
Mm-hmm. Do you want me to speak on that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, Joe, I'm sorry. I think I upended you.
Oh, thank you, because I think we drafted some proposed amendment relative to the easement, just to sort of give you some background on that, as I think has been very well identified. The future development, should it be approved tonight and by the electorate ultimately, that emergency access is critical to the health and safety of the residents. So, happy to report that while this legislation has been pending before the council, the developer, Deepwood Condominiums, did reach an agreement that's been provided to the city to have that emergency access easement, the specific language, the actual instrument that gets recorded ultimately. They did make some changes for, I'll call them housekeeping purposes, but they're truly for enforcement purposes. As members of council are aware, we've had some issues in the past relative to enforcement of some of these critical easements. So, some additional language, my suggestion, was added by the parties. I thank them for that cooperation. They were very, very responsive in that. So, we actually have the instrument that will be recorded. It's not going to get recorded today because, one, it hasn't been rezoned and, two, something could happen, the development may not move forward, so you can't put the cart before the horse. The actual easement, though, the actual document that would be recorded is on file with the clerk of council, so we've got it specifically identified. So, if it's only a few years before that gets recorded, we won't mistake it. So, I did have an amendment, not to change condition number four in section three, but to add a sentence to identify the actual easement that will get recorded. And I've provided that language to Councilman Kirchner. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple amendments to put before council, the first being under condition four at the end there. The emergency access easement agreement, which complies with this condition, is on file with the clerk of council and it shall be duly recorded as a precondition for the issuance of any construction permits. And additionally, adding number six, which would be a sidewalk shall be installed along the southerly side of the roadway.
All right. Thank you.
Need a second.
I say a finger up. Go ahead.
And what I'm assuming when you, the sidewalk along the southerly portion, that's the sidewalk at the end of Deepwood Boulevard? Is that what you're talking about?
That's a sidewalk on the south side of the street. Originally, I think the last time we entertained this, you brought us a plat that showed that sidewalk on one side.
Yes.
But it's very, very faint on the plat that we have now.
I agree with that statement, but...
I think the point is that it goes north.
Yeah, I know.
Because, I mean, there are some roads that go north-south in this, so it's not just on the southerly side. So, I just want to be clear as to, because if we're just putting it on the south side, then there would be some roads that wouldn't have sidewalks.
He's got it right.
Yeah, we didn't have like a sort of a, we didn't have a sort of bearing, so we sort of took the southerly, which would be adjacent, closest to 90.
Probably the longest sidewalk would be on the south side of our proposed...
That's why we labeled it southerly, understanding that it does have to ultimately connect to what's currently the Deepwood cul-de-sac and that's a northerly turn, to your point.
Yes, but there's also a couple intermediate streets that are in there.
Right. Is there a better, is there a better way to...
I guess I'd, if you, if the statement was that a sidewalk to be provided on all private streets on one side of the private street, I think that would comply.
Is that good?
Yeah.
No. It's what matches the plat that you came last time with.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's just that, well, we got it in our packets, was sketchy, with sidewalks.
I agree.
I would change that to number six, to a sidewalk shall be installed along the side of the roadway, one side.
Along one side?
Side, one side.
Of the roadways.
Correct. One side of the roadways.
Julie, did you get that?
Is that good?
I'll get it.
Mr. President, is this in our packet?
It is.
Where?
The development?
No, the amendments we're making.
No, not the amendments.
Do you want it on the fly?
You mean on the fly? Shouldn't all council be aware of something that's on the fly?
Now, this would match what we had in our last...
Apparently, it doesn't, because I don't know what you're talking about. He doesn't know what you're talking about, so... Explain to me exactly, Mr. Novak, please explain to me so I understand what you're talking about before I vote on something that I wasn't informed about.
I believe what... The amendment that they're talking about, when we were, when I was here last time, on our plan, we showed a sidewalk along one side of the private streets. Okay? And as Mr. Blake alluded, you know, this is 12-acre site squished down onto a piece of paper that's 24 by 36. And you see these two lines that are about a 16th of inch apart that represents the sidewalk. So, it's difficult to ascertain exactly on this plan as to where that sidewalk is. So, what we agreed last time was to put a sidewalk along one side of the private roads within the, within Deepwood Place Development. So, if we amend the, to clarify this plan, as long as we state it's one side along, sidewalk only required along one side of the private drives within this development, that's my understanding of what we had agreed to.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Mr. Zeeman, we spoke a little after 4:00 and this came about in the last two and a half hours? I mean, we had six weeks to work on this. Our last meeting was July 1st. I thought we'd have this all in front of us and decided upon...
It was a housekeeping item that just came up during the course of the meeting. So, again, and any member is free, if they feel that there's additional amendments that are advisable, to make a motion from the floor tonight. Obviously, you need a second, it needs to pass, so that's...
But my point is that this is just going to the vote of the people. So, six of us have to vote on something we're not 100% sure on to go to the vote of the people, who's going to vote on this.
Yeah. My understanding is this is just to call out something which is not self-evident on the plan, as Mr. Novak indicated, because it's so, when you reduce it in size, it's not clear that there's a sidewalk at all. So, that, I think, is, not to speak for President Blake, but that's...
That's it, exactly. And it's not mentioned in the text or any of the conditions.
Jordan Burns, counsel to the applicant, 3201 Enterprise Parkway, Cleveland. I'd like to sort of emphasize the same thing. This is a little bit of belt and suspenders, not that I would criticize a council for wearing both, but the ordinance itself references that the rezoning is conditioned upon development in accordance with the development plan attached as Exhibit B. That's the development plan that very faintly shows the sidewalks on one side of the road. So, it's there, but I understandably, council wants to ensure that it's explicit that those are sidewalks because it's not so visible from the document itself.
Thank you. I'll clear it up.
Everybody good?
Second.
By the way, you look exactly like your dad.
I've heard that before.
Mr. President?
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. President, I have one more question.
Oh, sure. John.
Who's going to be the builder of these townhouses?
We don't know that yet.
Don't know that yet?
We do not. We can't, we could possibly do it ourselves, but again, we can't sell something to somebody until we know that we can sell it to them. We don't have, it hasn't been rezoned, it hasn't been, we haven't gone through the approval process through the city of Mentor for the engineering and all that so forth. So, we, today, we do not know who that...
So, the pictures and depictions of the townhouses you gave us previously, you just took off the internet? So, we don't know that those are the townhouses that are going to go in or...
Well, first of all, we didn't just take them off the internet, but we, if you're asking are they going to be exactly as those pictures are, I would probably say no, but they, you know, as, the way I understand it, what we asked was, we said, this is a representation of what we're going to put on the property. And so, our final designs would have to mimic or be similar to those representations.
Okay. All right. Counsel.
Second.
I second it, Ray, yeah.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to suspend as amended.
Oh, forgot, got the amendment or no? Yeah.
We don't have to suspend because we've already done the readings.
It is third reading.
Yeah, this is third reading, so...
Okay.
Well, actually, it's under old business, so we have to do anything different?
This is under third reading.
Third reading, just approve, move to approve.
As amended.
It's done, as amended.
As amended. Julie, please call the roll.
Okay. Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right. Ordinance number...
Unbelievable.
Ordinance number 25-0-053 has been approved and will move on to the electorate in November. Next is managers report.
Thank you, Mr. President. And counsel, we have a multiple pavement open cut request for your consideration. The first is at 5596 Grove Avenue, request is from the O'Neill Excavating for a new six-inch sanitary sewer connection.
All right. Julie, you going to call the roll?
I need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. I'm sorry. Second.
All right. Now, Julie, call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your second request is at 6316 Center Street. This is a request from Froyrisch Burger Mentor LLC for a new water service line for Kearney's Public House right across the street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Our third request is on Garfield Road. It's a request from Polty Homes for a new eight-inch water main improvement at the Echo Hill Manor Development.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Our fourth request is at 8666 Mentor Avenue, request from Jeffrey Rosenthal for a new water service line for Lake County Dental.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. And the final request is at 7291 Chillicothe Road from Shamrock Construction for a new six-inch storm sewer connection.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Counsel, tonight's Mentor Rocks will feature Dark Side of the Moon, weather permitting, a tribute to Pink Floyd. Next week, August 26th, will be the final performance of the year, and will feature Living on a Bad Name, which is a tribute to Bon Jovi. The City of Mentor and the Mentor Community Arts Commission are hosting a storybook bench project gala and auction at the Springbrook Garden House on Wednesday, August 20th, from 7:00 PM to 9:30 PM. The benches, along with some smaller art pieces, will be auctioned off with proceeds supporting the work of the Arts Commission. Tunes at the Lagoons Concert will, will be this Friday, August 22nd, and will feature the Caliber Band. Performances, the performance starts at 7:00 PM at the Mentor Lagoons, and this will also be the final performance this year for that series. And we're starting to jump into our fall programming with the very popular Mysteries of the Manor Trail at the Wildwood Cultural Center. This year's dates are Friday, October 24th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and Saturday, October 25th, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The family-friendly event includes live DJ entertainment and food trucks, bounce houses, fun, fun and games, free craft activities, a live snake show, Bigfoot sighting, looking forward to that, Halloween movies, and a haunted manor house and trail tours, as well as local vendors and markets. Admission is $15 per person. Children under one are free, and they can register online or by calling the Mentor Recreation Department. The Mentor Recreation Center opened, reopened this week after being closed for approximately a week for our summer deep cleaning and maintenance, and we've gotten a lot of actual positive comments about that, just how well our staff has been keeping that up. So, we're very proud of the work that Recreation Department is doing there. And then finally, counsel, we have three new businesses in town to announce. North Coast Roofing and Masonry at 7840 Tyler Boulevard. New, I'm not sure if it's New York Prime Group or NY Prime Group, but they are at 7840 Tyler Boulevard, and Kings of the Mat Combat Training Center at 7252 Industrial Park Boulevard. So, we thank them for their investment and wish them success going forward. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Next is Clerk's Correspondence. Julie.
Counsel, in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court Month End Report for June of 2025, and I have a liquor permit, TRACs transfer from Beverage Refinery LTD at 258 West Olentangy Street in Powell, Ohio, that is being transferred request to 7289 Mentor Avenue LLC at 7289 Mentor Avenue, including the patio. And if counsel is in agreement with this TRACs transfer, then I'm requesting a vote of counsel approving the completion of the form. So, I'll need a vote for that.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for legal, why do we need to vote on that? Mr. Zeeman?
It authorizes Ms. Shavoni to complete the form and submit it. This way, she's, she's doing it with authority.
Okay. So, do we all have to sign it? Or just today, we just, we took care? Because we've never done that before, as far as I know.
Yeah, we have. It's been a while.
This is one of those TRACs, so it's a little bit, it's not just, you're not objecting, you're affirmatively indicating that it's okay to transfer that permission to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, I was also in receipt of a liquor permit, a new one for Star Ridge Hospitality LLC Holiday Inn at 7701 Reynolds Road, and that is all.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Commission Committee reports. Counsel, you are in receipt of the meeting minutes from the Tree Commission dated May 14th, 2025. The Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, their meeting's June 10th, 2025, and July 8th, 2025. Municipal Planning Commission meeting minutes, June 12th, 2025, July 3rd, 2025, and July 24th, 2025. So, under old business, first thing I'd like to bring up is the application for conditional use permit to allow a car wash, Clean Express, at 9361 Mentor Avenue. And we've been carrying this along for a while. Joe, would you like to speak about this first?
It, if, if it's counsel's judgment, whether it's ripe for action tonight or not, at the last planning commission meeting of, of last week, they did finalize their review and approval of the site plan. So, if that, if counsel feels that was the final component, it needs to reach a decision as to whether or not conditional use permit is appropriate for this use at this location, then it would be ripe. If it's your judgment, you need further information, then that's your prerogative as well.
Ken, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I, I would, counsel. You know, I, I will say that the applicant has, has been very cooperative in providing us the information that we've requested predominantly through the Engineering Department. We've looked at things like the impact at, at the intersection at Heasley and Mentor Avenue. We've looked at, we've asked for additional information on, on their queuing analysis and have also asked them to extend out their, their, their long-term review and the impact in that area over a longer period of time. And all that information has been reviewed to our satisfaction, but I think what gives us a little bit of concern on this is from a public safety standpoint, and there are some elements of it that we just can't really control over time, that I think experience has taught us could potentially be a problem. And, and the things that we can't control are things that, such as, for example, the, the timing of their wash cycle, the market conditions, which could impact the pricing that they charge over time. What we found is that, that the lower the price, the more traffic, and we've seen a problem with, at this very intersection, and counsel has received a lot of complaints over time on another car wash within close proximity to this intersection. So, those are the things that we can't control that give us some concern over time. I, I, I don't think there's any information that we can really request that would, that would mitigate those concerns. Just wanted you to be aware of them because, again, we have all experienced, this is a high, this is one of the highest volume intersections in our, in our city. Because of the volume of traffic, it is prone to vehicular accidents, and, again, not making any suggestions on how you should act, just to be aware of the fact that history has shown us that a similar operation has caused us significant traffic concerns in the past, and it's been difficult to really find a, a fix, a permanent fix for, for that. So, just wanted to add that, but otherwise, the data that's been provided hasn't given us a great deal of, of concern.
Well, you know, initially, my concern with this, with this lot, which is less than three-quarters of an acre, initially, my concern was for traffic, but it's, it's not only with traffic my concern lies, but you, you've, you've got the building, Solas Salons immediately behind this building, which will be on the business end of that car wash tunnel. So, cars coming out of there with that roaring noise, and the Solas Salon building, which I've heard from some of the tenants in there who are really upset about this idea, because they're doing massages, they're placing hot stones on people's backs for relaxation, and I think it's like 50 feet away is this car wash. And I watched the planning commission rerun from last Thursday, and there's no consideration for any sort of buffering there. There's no thought of any sort of a fence to go between. I think there's a one-foot rise has been approved, but this car wash will negatively affect that, that Solas Salon's business. And they have people in there doing hair and nails and all sorts of, of different services as that. So, from my time on the planning commission, I definitely would have voted no, because this will negatively affect a surrounding business. And the planning commission did, didn't do anything in terms of any sort of buffering between the two. This site is just too small for a car wash. I have concerns when I've watched the, the ingress and egress, which is going to be mingling with the cars exiting the, the car wash. And no sorts of signage is going to, to help that if you've got the, the ingress and egress is loaded up and cars can't get out of the car wash. That is a component of a too small of a site. Now, the site over on Munson, I visited a few times, and it seems to operate well, but that's probably three times the size of this site. And, you know, it's just the wrong place. That's my feeling. Counsel, anybody have anything to add?
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
What do we approve?
Okay. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, if we, if we could be heard. On behalf of the applicant, Jordan Burns, 3201 Enterprise Parkway. With me this evening is Joe Bertucci with the applicant, as well as Kevin Westbrook with GPT Group. Kevin is a traffic engineer for a number of municipalities in northeastern Ohio, and has been engaged to, to review the traffic impact of this development, both within the site and, and off-site. Just to sort of review how we got here, a car wash is a conditionally permitted use in this zoning district. The planning commission previously approved the conditional use permit, but, but held an abeyance review and approval of the site plan for the use. Counsel exercised its authority under the zoning code to reconsider the application for the, the conditional use, and we were here in May in connection with, with that reconsideration. At that time, the, the primary concern that was raised, I believe, was, was traffic, both internal to the car wash and, and the traffic on the, impact on the surrounding area. And we had noted that review and approval of the site plan for the car wash might help counsel better understand that, might address some of the concerns that counsel had expressed as well. We've now been, as, as counsel president noted, we've now been before the planning commission twice with respect to that, that site plan. And at last week's planning commission meeting, the planning commission, after giving us some, some meaningful input with respect to, in particular, traffic concerns, did approve our site plan with, with one requested modification, which we've incorporated into that, again, addressing traffic. If, if you'd allow us, we, we'd like to, to walk you through that site plan, because I think it does address the, the concerns regarding traffic that had been expressed. There was a, a comment made by Mr. Philippiac about the, the, the way to control the timing of the wash cycles, the uncontrollables, the, the cost and the, the, the ability to control and predict wash cycles. We actually can do that, as, as described in, before counsel at the May meeting. This is a wholly different car wash, as, as some of you who may have visited our other facilities or similar facilities may know, a wholly different type of car wash than, than the one nearby. It is automated. It is primarily used by subscribers who simply drive into the facility using an RFID chip. They don't have to scan anything. They don't have to enter any information. They don't have to pay. It, it works seamlessly for most of those visitors. There are new visitors, new customers, and, and to address those new customers who might take more time, there are actually a, a separate lane for those customers. And, and again, Mr. Bertucci can describe how, how that works, but, but in conjunction with evaluating your concerns, we've, we've done, I'm, I'm going to call it sort of the, the, the hurricane testing, if you will, of the plan. We've, we've done some analysis to show just what the capacity of the car wash is, the facility and the site is, is, notwithstanding its size, to, to handle an unreasonably large number of cars, more than, than, than could ever reasonably be expected to be served by this facility, to show you that, that there is sufficient capacity to do that without adversely impacting the, the traffic within the site and the adjacent uses that are, that are part of the development, and, and without having any impact on, on the, the roadways of any meaningful effect. So, if, if I could, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Bertucci and, and Mr. Westbrook to, to give you some of that input as well.
Good evening. Joe Bertucci, 13375 National Road, southwest, Atno, Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity. Apologies, I wasn't here last time. I wanted to address, just kind of get to the point, I did watch the last council meeting, and 95% of the conversation was about Zappi's and the experience that all citizens here in Mentor have with that facility. Although we don't like to talk about competitors and other washes in the market, since it was such a focal point, I thought it'd be a point to address it before we get to the capacity of our, of our facility. So, the biggest hurdle we have, which we're experiencing today, and you, you feel in your gut, is a perception of how car washes operate. And Zappi's is what we would call legacy car wash, who's adapted its model to try to keep up with the express model, which is a membership model and with state-of-the-art equipment. The differences with Zappi's is that, we pointed out, and I want to make it very clear, they are a single-lane express car wash. They can fit approximately 23 vehicles in their stack. That is a combined retail customer who does not have a membership, which must interact with a pay kiosk, and also members. So, that immediately stalls their, their stacking. In addition, they offer a $3 car wash, which we do not offer that. And someone brought up a great point, no difference in McDonald's offering the 99-cent, you know, whatever burger, lines go out the door, right? We do not offer that. Our model is the membership model. 80% of our customers are members, so they're very familiar with how to use our facility. They're very familiar with our locations. They're very familiar with our operations. In addition, our access, so Zappi's, when they do offer a $3 wash or on a very sunny day after a salt event, they will back out onto the right of way, onto the street. That is not the case for our wash, seeing as though we're, from our entrance, over 200 feet from Mentor Avenue from the Speedway side and 400 feet from Mentor Avenue. That's what we're talking about, is Mentor Avenue, right? So, we are substantially further away, if anything were to occur. Kevin Westbrook will walk through our engineer, our capacity. The capacity is not to Mentor Avenue, to be clear about that. The capacity is within our stack. So, not including the easement area, which crosses the tunnel exit, all of this capacity does not contemplate blocking that. We have agreed to, in our other Mentor Avenue location, as we would here, to close off our access, and that access is at our stack lane. The easement area will remain open at all times. That is an agreement, and both easement agreements have been finalized, but with Walmart and Speedway. So, so what we're agreeing to is to block off our stacking lane, so there won't be an instance of stacking to our tunnel exit. There won't be an instance of stacking to our neighbors. Quite honestly, they wouldn't permit that. We went, we have gone through in detail with Walmart and Speedway. I've had person myself have had calls with both and have reviewed the site plans in detail. They are fully aware of how these sites will operate. So, our neighbors are fully supportive of our use and how we plan to operate at their location. I just wanted to make it very clear that we are not Zappi's, not only from an operational standpoint, but literally by the facts and by the numbers. Their stack cannot have the capacity that ours has. It's not set up that way. It never was. I will welcome Kevin to come up and provide the numbers, and then I can add any color after that. Oh, sorry. The reason I'm asking Kevin to come up is because, sorry, we've done two traffic studies as recommended by city staff, happy to do that. It showed no negative effects. I believe city staff was in support of those. We haven't received any comments to the contrary that those, any issues with those reports. In addition to that, we've done stacking analysis to go above and beyond to show the capacity of our wash. We do, we can't control the timing of it. I can tell you that I did visit Zappi's today and went through the wash, and I did go to ours, which is a, although the one in Mentor is a retrofit of an old ride eight, the tunnel length and equipment inside is the exact same as a standard Clean Express auto wash. We are substantially faster going through our wash. So, in addition to all of the other qualities I just referenced or the differences, our wash tunnel is actually faster. We can process more customers at a higher rate than Zappi's. So, I asked Kevin to do an analysis of our standard wash, our timing, give us our half-speed, if we are only operating at 50% speed, 50%, what it would mean based upon what the traffic study says, and then I also asked him to give me, because we're, we're talking about a lot of hypotheticals, right, how you can't control. I can't control what a customer offers for a car wash, and nor should that impact how my facility operates. I can't control that they have legacy equipment. I can't control that they have one lane. I don't know how their operations are. Operationally, we are voted the best in every market that we are operating in, because that's all we do, our car washes. If we don't do that well, we fail. We believe we're the best, and that's why we want to come to Mentor. We want to give you the best car wash experience. It's not just any other car wash. That's the perception we have to overcome here. So, I asked Kevin to give us, if we're going to talk hypotheticals, give us a hypothetical worst-case situation where we have a 26-stack facility. How many cars could we process at a peak hour? And then I'll let him run through those numbers to show you that it's not even a question per the numbers, and we're welcome to submit that and have city staff and the engineer look at that, and you'll find that, I believe that they will be in agreement with that.
Kevin Westbrook with GPT Group, 6200 Oak Tree Boulevard in Independence. As Joe said, yeah, we, we ran similar calculations that we had provided to, to the engineering staff that looked at a variety of worst-case, you know, half-speed concentration of the traffic. We never had looked at what's the absolute maximum that they could handle before, you know, you would reach the end of their queue. So, we did the same calculations using their, their typical processing rate, which is two vehicles per minute, which is standard, and, you know, also using our calculations that we have in this traffic study that says, you know, the average hour is 39 vehicles comes through. Okay, so now you get one of those February days, Joe kind of mentioned, sun comes out, everybody wants to get the salt off their car, everyone's heading to the car wash, what's the maximum they could handle? So, you know, working through some calculations with everyone showing up in that processing time, we've, I've calculated that we could process 144 vehicles in a peak hour. That's nearly four times what the average rate that they would typically handle. And you could, you know, process that 144 before you would fill up all 26 spots. I've got calculations I could share, again, with, with engineering. It's the same methodology we used before, just kind of backing into what is that maximum number before you would completely fill up. And so, you know, it will build over the hour with that many people showing up, but 144, I mean, that's a crazy number. I'm guessing you would, Joe would be ecstatic if they could get 144 through every day, all if they could get 144 through every day, all day. He could probably retire. So that's, you know, then that's the extreme, and if something crazier happened and more people showed up than that, that's when the barricading off the stacking lanes would occur, and people would be directed through the easement or not even to come into easement. And honestly, if you pulled up to a car wash and you saw 20, 20-something, okay, I'm coming back later, or I'll wash the car at home, I'm not going to get in the line. So, you know, but 26, it can handle that, and it would process 144 in that hour, which I think is pretty crazy, a great number. Building off of the traffic study that were both submitted to engineering, you know, they're basically the same study, but that we were requested to expand it to include the Heasley Mentor intersection, all positive results, you know, the amount of traffic that this would generate on a typical day is not big numbers, talking about 39 vehicles coming in, 39 exiting, splitting about a 50-50 distribution east and west. It, when you break that down, you're really not adding that much traffic to each individual intersection, and we saw, you know, minimal changes in any kind of delay at those intersections, nothing that would trigger any kind of noticeable degradation of the operations of those intersections. Joe, is there anything else you wanted me to cover regarding that? And I've got copies of the calculations if you wanted to have.
We'll submit those as part of the record.
So I have a question. What about your impact on the Solas Salons building right behind you?
With traffic standpoint you're talking?
No, I mean, the impact of your business. You've got a salon business behind you that has about 25 renters in there who do salon work. And through this whole process, I haven't seen anybody say anything about any sort of buffering between you and them. Those people are going to move out of there, and then that business is potentially going to fail, because your car wash is going to be roaring through there, and all that you've offered is a one-foot knee wall, which would, I guess, keep car tires from crossing over and, so what about that business?
Yeah, fair point. I would address that by saying, I don't know the number of planning commission meetings we've been to or council meetings in total. No one from the salon business has showed up to any public meeting to express their concerns. I imagine if they were concerned their business would close, as I would, I would show up to a meeting. No one has expressed that. Through all of our planning commission meetings, it was never brought up. Whether that was a miss or not, I respectfully understand the point you're bringing up. We've been approved preliminary site plan approval, which means we still need to complete our final site plan approval, and we are happy to entertain some sort of buffer wall. We've done that before, a wall with landscaping, we are happy to entertain that. Mr. President, it's just not a comment that came up, and so we didn't think it was a concern. If it is a concern, we are happy to address that. We become part of the community, we join community events, we sponsor money, we donate our grand opening money, our towel program, our air freshener goes to nonprofits in Mentor, Ohio. Like, we become part of the community and really entrench ourselves, and so the last thing we'd want to do is hurt a neighbor of ours. In fact, we want to partner them somehow and enhance their business. We would absolutely address that, and I imagine through city staff and Kathy that we'd be able to address that through final site plan approval.
Mr. President?
Yes, John.
Just one question. You said your car wash does two cars per minute?
The timing is 120 vehicles per hour. That is our minimum, so I messaged our engineer today, and I can have him put it in writing, but we actually operate 140, but with, and that's with a, we call it a two wrap, so our tunnels are 120 feet long, and we can fit two wraps. Those are the large ones that wrap around your vehicle and wash. Ones that have a single wrap are at 120 miles per hour, so I defaulted to the lower, slower speed. But on a double wrap, which this would be, we actually would operate 140 vehicles per hour, and I am happy to update our analysis, because I can't imagine what that number would be if it's already 144 in a peak hour, a peak hour.
Yeah, well, that'll come more to match what he gave. He's still four more vehicles than you're offering. You said 144, and you're saying 140.
Well, yeah. Yeah, based on processing 120 and considering the queuing that you can store, we're saying that you could process 140, or you could, 144 could show up in an hour and not impact off of the stacking lanes.
Okay.
And probably with that 144, it would probably, I don't know, I'm guessing maybe 160, you could probably process and store, they could show up.
Can you guys please speak in the mic more if there is?
Sorry.
Oh, that's better.
Do you want to repeat any of that, or you got?
I don't know, they just flash mic sign up there, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so could process probably more than the 144, assuming his 140 higher rate.
Okay.
Do you guys have a sound decibel rating on the back of your car washes? How much sound is coming out of the business end, what I call it?
Tunnel exit side?
Decibel sound rating?
Yeah, on the tunnel exit side, I, please don't quote me exactly, because I'm not the manufacturer, I believe it's about 90.
90?
Standing inside the tunnel at the blowers. So at, at one foot, standing underneath it.
That's a lot.
A few feet to the end of the building. And again, we can mitigate that with walls and landscaping, and we can actually add some sound reducers to our blowers, so to actually improve that number.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And we're happy to address all of those, it's just it hasn't been a concern or a comment up to this point.
Yeah, that's because I think we're at 20 decibels between normal speaking volume.
Respectfully, it's about 50 to 60. I could pull it out now and show you, but, and in a hair salon, when you have a blower and a dryer, blood hair blow drying, the decibel levels are substantially high. So I'm not negating the fact that sound comes from a car wash, but a hair salon has a lot of sound inside their building with hair dryers and.
Unless you're doing a massage on that side, but.
Again, their hair dryers are inside the building as well, so they have sound decibels as well. But again, these are comments that we haven't addressed up to this point, and we're happy to work with the city to do that.
Thank you. Counsel?
Mr. President, I move to approve.
So I think I was negligent in removing this from the table.
Move to remove from the table.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
To remove from the table?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Kirsner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mrs. Dowling?
No.
Mr. Kirsner?
No.
Mr. Krieger?
No.
Mr. Mern?
No.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Sorry, but your COP has been removed.
Thank you.
All right. Any other old business?
Mr. President? Mr. Fluffy, I'm just looking back at the concept site for the Civic Center, and I was at Mentor City Fest, great job. The basketball court has a tent on it. What were we going to do with, weren't we going to do something with that court? Were we going to turn that into pickleball, or?
The existing?
The existing basketball court has a giant tent on it.
Yeah, sir, that will be turned into three new pickleball courts.
That'll be next summer?
It's a part of this contract.
Okay.
So it'll be ready for the next playing season.
All right, thank you, that's all. I was asked.
Mr. President?
Yes.
At the last couple of meetings, I brought up the fact that we had a resident that, seeing it was a little bit unfair how we're helping certain types of individuals, for example, the seniors at the senior center and the families at the rec center and things of that nature. So my proposal was, was to try to help everybody with our fire levy that is approximately $2.15 million. At that time, of course, it was quickly rebutted because it came from me, that we're taking away from the fire levy. No, we're not taking away from the fire levy. I want to use the general fund dollars, which we have $76 million in our general fund, in order to help this, every citizen that owns property and pays taxes in the city of Mentor. So quick math, unlike counting cars through a car wash, if you have $76 million and you're going to take $2.15 from the general fund, you now have $74 million, it's not that hard to figure out. So I, you said it might have to have some discussion, that was six weeks ago, so I'm wondering where that stands and what it takes to put on this agenda so we could decide what we want to help the citizens of Mentor out to the tune of $2.15 million when we have $76 million and change in our savings account. Will it be on next week's agenda in two weeks?
So let me ask you, Scott, of the six people up here, you being one, who else have you, who else have you got in agreement with you on this?
That's why I brought up everything on the floor. That's why I want everyone to know everything that's going on, unlike what transpired earlier with deep wood property, and all of a sudden a new sidewalk coming out of nowhere, and I don't have any plans or information, so I'm communicating with my colleagues.
That sidewalk didn't come out of anywhere, it was on the previous site plan that we received.
If we're not talking about that, we're talking about whether or not we're going to put, to help the citizens of Mentor, are you going to put it on the agenda or not?
So let's do a little background on that fire levy.
Are we going to put it on the agenda or not? What is it, law director, what does it take to have something put on the agenda?
Wait, wait, let me, let me background this a little bit. That fire levy was approved in November of 2017. That year, 12,051 people showed up to vote on it. For that levy was 9,017. Against that levy was 3,034. So 75% of our voters were in favor of.
Excuse me, you're twisting my words. Yes, I am interrupting you, because it's not relevant.
It is completely relevant.
The people voted for the fire levy, we didn't have money then, we put it on that levy.
Had money then.
Because, because we put on the levy because it was not permanent. Do you have that in your little dissertation that she took?
I do.
Okay, how many years did, was our fire levy stand for?
Oh, I just think that was there about 20?
No, it was renewable every five years, you're wrong.
No, no, you asked.
So the reason why we had to go back and make our fire levy permanent, I'm just trying to help the people of Mentor, apparently you're not. Is that because?
You're just pandering for your election, that's 75 days away.
Oh, really? Now you overstepped the line.
Okay, fine.
No, because.
What is this then?
Because Mrs. King was up here, and I was back, brought it back up when she was up here back in April. You're out of line, you're insubordinate.
Oh, fine. Are you done?
No, I'm not done.
Well, keep going then.
So are you or are you not going to try to help the people of Mentor by taking $2.15 million from our $76 million surplus that we have sitting in savings?
You're going to tell them that we don't need that fire levy, we're getting ready to build a $12 million station three.
It has nothing to do with the fire levy. Does everyone understand if you have $76 million in the general fund, and you're taking $2 million from the general fund to pay for a fire levy to help the citizens of Mentor? It's that plain and simple. And it's the only thing that we could do after she said that we don't help everybody at once. Now, in terms of the garbage, which Mr. Roland Vern, we spent a lot of time on that with your predecessor over the years, because of how our garbage is set up and took all our different contracts that we had over the years, and we tried to combine all the different contracts, and we finally were able to combine the contracts. So Mr. Vernon could attest, and even if our previous law director, Matt probably isn't aware of this because he's new, is that we are basically, as a city, paying about the same dollar amount as we were about 20, 20 years ago for garbage. Go back and look. So with the garbage, it's $1.171 million. So let's just round that up to 1.8. So if you want to really help everyone and help the citizens in this time, do both. It's now $4 million out of our $76 million surplus. We could build, how many, five, six stations we want to build straight out of surplus? We're not going to build this out of the surplus because we're going to finance it. Why are we going to finance it? Because it makes economic sense to finance it, because when straits are coming down, why use our money, we could use their money. But here, we're giving back to the citizens. And it's really a shame that you're the one playing politics, and even bring that up and saying that, because I'm trying to help the people of Mentor, and I'm sure everybody else on this council wants to help the people of Mentor too.
25 years you've been sitting there, haven't, I don't think I've heard you put anything like this forward, but now you're 75 days away from an election?
And you're an embarrassment as a council president.
Oh.
All right, so Mr. Law Director, since, what have we got, what does it have to take to put this in, in order to discuss it? Do we have to ask a formal work session, we got to put on the floor? Alls I'm trying to do is help the people of Mentor. Mrs. Jean King asked us to, and I was like, how can we do it? And that's what I came up with.
A motion, a second, if a majority tonight passes it, it'll make your agenda.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, so there's not a second to help the people of Mentor save money on their taxes. Got you. Thank you for your, once again, professionalism, and this is how you try to work with people, and this is how you communicate with people instead of trying to ramp things through.
Did you get a second, Scott?
Are we on a new business yet?
Yeah, go ahead.
New business. We talked about it earlier with Garfield Park. Mr. Donovan and I have had a lot of conversations with Garfield Park. So the water park is now part of a phase in Garfield Park. And we mentioned the other buildings, we mentioned the parking lot, we mentioned redoing baseball fields, everything of that nature. Is there going to be a formal plan for Garfield Park? Because, once again, like Blackrock Golf Course and irrigation, you know, it's a multi-step process, it could be like a four or five-step process. So what are we planning on doing with Garfield Park to make sure Garfield Park is going to be up to the standard like, for example, Civic Center Park?
So, so councilman, right now, the spray park is intended to be, right now, we desire that to be a single-phase project for the, for the spray park itself. It's possible that that could get broken up into two contracts, but both contracts would be, would, and our, our goal would be to have them both completed by the beginning of the pool season next year, which roughly is the end of the school year. With respect to a second phase, we do have, we will ask council as part of your 2026 budget to make improvements, to expand the size of the parking lot, which would resurface the existing lot and add some additional parking spaces. Beyond that, we would probably look at phasing that could include some removal of older existing structures there, and then perhaps study any renovations or improvements to existing buildings out there. Beyond that, there is no larger master plan at this moment, not to say that couldn't be part of ongoing review and approval. I mean, one of the things that I think we've had some discussions with the ward councilmen on this not too long ago is the fact that every building in the city's inventory is always under scrutiny. Some have undergone significant renovations, others council has approved replacement for. We would take that same level of review for those, those structures at Garfield Park.
Okay. And then number two, as you know, we are at our channel breaking back on August 1st, and one of the, Mr. Krieger and I talked about this a little bit, but one of the things that we should review for the fall in our budget session is that we don't own all that property at the Lagoons, at the end of E, and then at the end of D. So right where it starts, at the Northern Point, Mr. Vernon could tell you, Mr. Swerke could tell you, is that part of, that is owned by Mentor and the Lake, it's also owned by Mentor Harbor Yacht Club. Now, I'm not saying, if anyone puts a word in my mouth, is that we should run that wall because it's 1,000 feet, plus you got to run electricity, plus you got to run water. But what I am saying is that we should own that property so that that way we could prevent the erosion that's already occurring all throughout, well, we've already lost over 30 acres. So just that point alone for us boaters that see it all the time, some people aren't on boats all the time, don't see it all the time, but we've lost a lot of land there at that point, that's just going to come around and take out the existing trees that we've already lost. So we should take a look at that.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable topic for, for review, for sure.
Thank you.
Mr. President, another subject here, probably odd that I'm bringing this up, but there's, if everyone's noticed, there's been a boom in electric bikes throughout the country. I probably see more electric bikes on the roads now than I do regular bikes, and I think there's, actually, I'm really surprised we haven't had a really serious issue with, with them. I see the Type III electric bikes, which can do over 30 miles an hour with young children on them, coming down Bellflower Road, no helmets, going down sidewalks 20 miles an hour. And I don't know whether there's been any issue in other cities, if you've talked to anybody about it, but I, I think that the time has come, I'm sure the chief has probably heard some issues about it, and I think it's time to, you know, try to wrestle with how we can best save people from this, some issues that could cause serious safety problems.
Yeah, I appreciate that concern, councilman. We actually, ironically, we just had this conversation with Mayor Eva from Mentor on the Lake. Their administration and council is looking at. Their administration and council is looking at maybe some draft language for legislation that could provide some level of oversight and control over, over those e-bikes. We absolutely have the same concern. I'm, I feel fairly confident there's probably already some legislation on the books that addresses them as motorized vehicles or they may also already fall under that provision of a slow-moving vehicle that a lot of our, a lot of our residents have pointed out as it, as they relate to golf carts. But it just seems kind of a freefall right now and, you know, most of the time we see the kids out there on these bikes, they don't have helmets. We've had some, I wouldn't say we had any accidents, but I've seen instances, personally seen incidents where e-bikes have, you know, nearly run people off the sidewalk. So we do need to have a hard look at that, and I think it would be a wise idea to be talking about that with some of our neighbors right now because it seems like a regional standard, especially with neighboring communities, since these bikes cross borders all the time, is in order. So we're going to spend some time on that. And I, I don't know, Chief, do you want to address that at all? I know it's a concern that you share.
No, I agree. It is a concern. I, I see them just like you do, they're flying all over the place, a lot of the young kids. We are looking at it, doing research to see, you know, what's applicable for, for those bikes, and I highly agree with any further research we can do to see what we can do about them.
You know, it's, it's not only bikes, but I've also seen scooters-
Yeah.
-that are electrified that go extremely fast. There's one down in my neighborhood. I was just shocked how fast that, that thing can go.
I agree. There is a whole slew of vehicles of, that we just haven't really had to deal with in the past, and so we'll work with the law department on that.
Mr. President? I did come upon an accident on Mentor Avenue one day. I, the person said they weren't riding the electric bike, but when I came upon them and the bike was in the road and the person was face down in the grass and phone and everything was everywhere, he had hit his head on the telephone pole. And the police officers came and, you know, there was no proof he was riding it, but he said he fell walking it, but there's no way. But it was pretty serious and those things, 35, 40 miles an hour, the one he had was basically a mini motorcycle with an electric motor. I mean, they're, some of them are faster than motorcycles, actually. They're, they're pretty, and people are just buying them and getting on them and they don't even know how to ride them. That's the dangerous part, you know? That's all I got.
Mr. President, just, I think I shared this with Ken. I had a resident send me a video of his speedometer and he was doing like 34 and the electric bike was pulling away from him on months and on the edge of the road, probably about a 12-year-old child. And they were very concerned about the fact, so.
Wow.
We'll get working on it.
All right, any more new business?
Oh, new business?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I just want to make a comment. I don't know if the administration has heard comments, but I've received so many positive comments about a field, zinnias on Tyler Boulevard. I believe it has been planted by, I'm pretty sure it's buyer's products on their property. I don't know if you've seen it. It's an entire field of flowers and people are just so excited about that. If you haven't seen it, you really have to. And if, that's a flower that grows real easily by seed and it was, it was just like, all of a sudden it was green and then all of a sudden it's just solid flowers. So there's pictures all over, so I think it's a great thing, and I'm pretty sure it was buyer's products that did that.
All right, moving on, persons before council. I see that we've got four members of the Mentor Tree Commission. And I'm, I'm going to imagine that they all want to speak on the same issue. So I'm going to call you up one by one and hopefully you guys will not be redundant, that you've all got something to say. Each one of you will have four minutes to speak. And when you come up, when I call your name, come up, name, address, and then go, okay? We'll start with Marie McConnell.
Good evening. My name's Marie McConnell. I live at 4962 Corduroy Road. I'm the newest member of the, the Tree Commission. In March, I learned about the ODNR Urban Forestry Grant and brought it forth to our commission so that we could take advantage of it to improve our city and strengthen our urban forest. I think this is an important grant for us to get. It's $100,000. It's broken down into many different facets that we can take advantage of. Tree planting, we can also do planning, which I think is the most important part of what we're missing here at the City of Mentor. I've worked in this field for 35 years. I have a lot of expertise in tree, tree planting and tree growing, along with many of the other Tree Commission participants. We feel that it's the best practice that we look at the inventory that we lack here in the city. We have a, a quote for $60,000 and that can be part of this grant that we can apply for. I was just handed before this meeting, another proposed cost from our city grant writer. Yesterday, when we got the, the draft from him, it did not have the street tree inventory as part of it. And I'm here to, to say that that's probably the most important part of this grant. It's been 30 years, 30 years since our city has had an inventory of our trees. Since that point, we have lost over 6,000 trees to diseases and insects. The part that our grant writer has put in here is that he would like to plant 180 trees. I'm all for planting trees. I think it's wonderful. But if we don't have an inventory to know what we have, we're working against ourselves. We lost those 6,000 trees due to Emerald Ash Bore, which is one species. We could be heading in that same direction. So to want to plant an additional 180 trees on top of the 300 trees that we plant annually, we're setting ourselves up for failure. This, the grant does have some requirements, and those requirements is we have to plant a tree, trees in the heat zone of the Tyler, the Tyler area.
You've got 30 seconds.
And I'm just asking that, that you consider what we're doing, because the trees are important, it's our infrastructure, it's stormwater, it cools our areas, it improves our property value, and it's, makes our city more livable. So thank you for your time and your support, and I hope that you make the inventory the most important part of that grant.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Okay. Number two on the list is Louise Watson Mills. And name and address, please.
Louise Watson Mills, 9073 Lake Overlook Drive, Mentor. I have a degree in landscape architecture from the Ohio State University and have worked in that field since 1975. I have a lot of background in tree management and design and implementation of tree plantings. So what I'm going to talk about is the grant itself. The funds from the grant are supplied by the USDA Forest Service in 1924. The monies are intended to invest in long-term growth and development of urban forestry programs. The grant is being allocated by the State of Ohio, Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The primary objectives are to increase the capacity of Ohio communities to effectively manage and grow their urban forest canopy. As with many grant applications, the RFP contains many specific requirements, and ODNR will be reviewing the submittals with a checklist covering these requirements. The checklist and accompanying descriptions have been communicated very clearly in the RFP, and additional information is not wanted. The deadline for submittal is now next Wednesday, which is coming up very quickly. And if we work effectively, we can still submit a well-qualified application. The knowledgeable members of the Tree Commission can compile documents required and to submit a very qualified application. The current work product that we have been supplied by the city will not pass the first level of review by ODNR, and additional data required to be compiled by the Tree Commission will be submitted to Kevin for final transfer to ODNR. The RFP requests a budget table and budget explanation that outlines the proposed request, including leveraged funds. The leveraged funds are in-kind services, including supplies and equipment in the city, but the Division of Forestry obtained a match waiver for this grant and no matching funds are required from the city. Leveraged funds for additional funds from the community investing in the work, such as, such as existing personnel and existing equipment. ODNR is, is interested in understanding the overall community commitment to urban forestry. Per conversations we have had with ODNR, they want us to continue our existing program as well as projects described in the grant, not to have the grant replace the existing program. Application must include a brief scope, a brief scope of work, how the community will be engaged with the project, and how the information from the community will be used, communication with the community and how that will be handled, quarterly update meetings with ODNR, which will be handled by the Tree Commission with assistance from the council, budget and leveraged funds, existing ordinance language, authorization from council, certification of responsibility from the Tree Commission and council, and a Gantt chart with quarterly goals outlined. I think this is a very important opportunity for the city to gain free money, basically, $100,000 for work that we would really need for the inventory as Marie described, and for additional tree planting in the heat zone that has been identified along Tyler Industrial Boulevard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. OH?
IO.
All right, number three, Rod Schroder. Name, address, four minutes, Rod.
Hello, everybody. My name's Rod Schroder. Live in Noel Creek. Seen me up here before. First of all, thank you for helping build the strongest tree commission in this state. Nobody else has a tree commission like us. We're called by ODNR, other municipalities, Ohio Extension Officers every week, asking our expertise. Kevin Grippy gave us this, a new estimate on how we should allocate funds for the $100,000 grant. This is rubbish. We need this grant, okay? We need just $60,000 for an inventory. Please help us out. We're not asking for money from any account that you guys own.
Hey, Rod.
We're asking for free money.
Right.
Yeah.
What are you guys asking for? I'm a little confused.
Okay, so-
What, what, this is the first time it's come up as far as the Tree Commission's-
Okay.
What are you asking council to do?
We're at like the 11th hour here. We got to get this in. Basically, a tree inventory is an inventory of every street tree in the city. It identifies the tree, the location, the condition.
No, I get that. That's what you're going to use the money for.
Yes.
But what are you asking, what does council have to do to make this grant happen?
Help us balance the sheet so it works for everybody. So it includes planting trees, removing dead hazardous trees, and an inventory. We cannot settle, we have not come to a settlement on the numbers yet. We need to come to a settlement on these numbers to make everybody happy. And right now, these numbers are not jiving. We're at the end, we've been working on this grant for how, the paperwork should have been in already. We're, we're losing here. We're totally losing. We're going to leave, this is a one-time grant. We're, we're blowing it.
What are our odds of receiving this grant in?
Extremely high. Extremely. Marie, she is probably the biggest asset we have ever had in this city, and she deals with ODNR all the time when she gives speeches and seminars for continuing education. And they're telling us, you're losing it, guys.
Have you gone to the administration and asked for additional funds? Because this is the first John and I were just talking about.
We're, we're dealing with the grant writing right now, and that's where we're stuck at.
Okay.
We're told the administration isn't giving it to us.
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't you talk to the administration? And then, I'll get crucified for saying this, but once again, we have $76 million in our budget, in our-
I'm not, no, I don't care about that. I don't, I don't want your money.
If you need 60 grand, I think we can afford it.
I want free money. That's why, we want free money.
Right.
And our expertise is able to wrangle that free money.
I just don't understand how this came to this point, and John and I, we're at loss.
You know what? We don't know how it got to this point either.
Mr. President?
So we just- Rod?
Yeah.
How do you get your inventory? Are you getting paid to get the inventory?
No, we're not.
You need money to get the inventory? We're, we're trying to figure out.
It's private contractor.
You need an inventory to get a-
It's $60,000 to a private contractor, a reputable contractor.
So you just need an inventory. Who does this counting in, in this inventory?
It's the contractor that does it.
And who's paying them?
It will come from the grant.
From the grant, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I, that's all I needed to know. Hopefully, we can help you.
All right, we'll help you. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
Excuse me.
Okay, I think-
Line is next Wednesday?
Yes.
Next Wednesday.
I, I know this is last minute, but we, we've been trying to work it out, work it out, and it just-
So do we, Mr. President, Mr. Zeeman, I guess, do we try to work it out right here on the spot? What do we have to do?
I don't think that's, I, I think this requires a level of expertise. My, my understanding is that there seems to be a dispute between members of the Tree Commission and the assistance that they, that they're, that they're, they're asking from the administration. So, Mr. President, I'd, I'd suggest it's probably a manager's issue at this moment, but I don't mean to speak out of turn.
All right, Ken, you-
Well-
Were you, Rod, are you done?
Yeah, unless you got anything else for me.
All right, yeah.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
Before we get to the next one, Ken, would you?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, there's a disconnect in communication. The first I really learned about this was very recently, where, where are the grants? And our office is planning on making application. Our primary purpose is always to, is to try to get grant money for our highest priorities, so we were focused on actual tree planting. The, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources identified in particular, a couple of particular areas in the city that they felt were eligible for some tree removal and replacement. That would include some of the, an area mostly south of Mentor Avenue, off of, off of the extended 306 and those, some of those neighborhoods. And so we're trying to get an estimate of what that might cost. We, we did look at the inventory, I think, last year at budget time, and, and again, at that time, Mr. Schweickert, who was really in charge of our urban tree forestry program, and I agreed with him at the time, didn't feel that the, the expenditure was, was, was worth what we were going to be paying in general out of our pocket. So I'll talk to Mr. Grippy. We may be able to accommodate their request as well. $60,000 seems like an awful lot of money to do a tree service, survey, but I'm sure there are other vendors out there. Maybe that is the cost. I think about a year ago or two years ago, when we first talked about this, that number was about a third of that. So inflation is out there. But I think, again, we, we would like to have a little bit more direct conversation on what the goals are and what the priorities are for that, as opposed to the only contact with the administration being our, our grant writer in the absence of your knowledge, my knowledge. So I think we need to, we'll take a look at it. I mean, we still have time, and I know Mr. Grippy has done some work on this already, so.
Mr. President, am I correct, the $60,000 would come from the $100,000 grant, correct?
If it were awarded.
Not out of city funds, but from the grant?
Again, on the assumption that it would get awarded in that, in that amount. I mean, of course, like any grant, we'll, we'll look at the strength of the grant and probably ask for-
ask for the full amount. So, you know, maybe all needs can be accommodated. We'd have to take a look at it.
But it's not something that we would have to spend if we didn't get the grant.
Oh, absolutely.
That would be a discussion for a later time.
Oh, 100%.
So it would come from this grant.
In fact, I don't know what the match requirement is on it, if there's any, but we'll take a look at it.
She said there was no match.
Yeah.
Yeah. She said there was no match.
So then, yeah, even in a stronger position.
Okay.
So, Ken, me personally, I do see the value in a tree inventory, that we know exactly what's where on every street. And to Marie's point about the next Emerald Ash Bore, that we could look at that inventory and say, these are the trees that need to receive a treatment, if there is a treatment available. So I would like to see this given a priority and get it into play by Wednesday. Is it Wednesday? I'd like to see that be a priority that this be applied for. I mean, if we don't get it, we don't get it. We tried. But if we get it, I think it's a great asset to have that. So we've got one more speaker, Jason.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's another speaker.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry about that. I thought we were done. Go ahead.
We've got one more speaker, Jason Crookshanks. And name, address, four minutes. Don't tell them who your dad is.
Hi, I'm Jason Crookshanks, 8698 Harvest Home in Mentor. I really was just planning to come up here and say thanks for your help and thanks for your interest in what we do. I'm also fairly new to the Tree Commission. I sit back there and just say, well, maybe I should come up. I wasn't sure. I think what we do is voluntary for the city, and we're just trying to help out things here. And I hope that you guys are looking at the same aspect. We don't have any personal gain out of doing this, but I think what we're trying to do tonight is just get you to understand it and maybe help out a little bit in more of the grant writing. We're trying to take advantage of fund and some opportunities that are out there and not ask the city for funding in this. So what we're not trying to ask for funding tonight. We're just trying to get some help in pursuing what we think's important to the city. So I think go from there, and hopefully, it is the last second, but we do need some help before next week. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And I agree with Rod. We've got the best tree commission in the state of Ohio, and the passion that you guys show for trees in our community, that's appreciated. So we appreciate your passion. We appreciate what you guys do, and we're hoping to help you with this. All right? Light the fire.
Thank you. If we're going to be called one of the tree capitals of the world, I think we need to invest in that. I mean, we've... Let's be honest, we've taken a lot of trees out lately. A lot of properties got taken, a lot cleaned, a lot of developments. A lot of trees have been cut down lately. And, you know, from us who've been around here for a long time, a lot of the woods we used to hang around in. But, you know, we do need the housing and the development, but I think we need to back ourselves up also and do the best we can to... Like she said, if you're planting 150 trees, there really has to be a proper way to do it. You know, we don't know that. They know it. They're arborists and all that. So I think we need to put a little push on it.
I agree.
Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I got.
Just one last thing. I want all of council to understand that all this expertise comes from Ward 4.
Every one of them?
Except for Rod.
Every one of them.
One of them's Ward 4.
Crookshanks should have never got on there, now you...
And Rod, Rod actually trimmed my tree, so maybe you can come back and do it again.
Oh, you can't say that.
On that note, I'll move to adjourn. How is that?
Second.